We have good news. You're to say you're mine, not to ask for mine. I can hear about the additional appropriations for Ralph Arman's final pay. Do you by chance have a copy of the itemized invoice that was submitted for that?
No.
Do you guys ever get to look at itemized invoices for your bills that you're passing?
That question will be next.
Well, I blew this one up so that you can see. This is what is constituted as an itemized invoice. And this is feeding Mr. Arman's final pay. And I know that we've got some business people or professionals here. But you guys will tell me if you understand what those numbers mean. And I've started calling them.
He's little Tim. I trust my code part.
I've got a small copy here.
One of the questions, first question that's open here is there a job description that tells why what is available to any of the employees, including him? He was a salary person.
He's salaried. He should be exempted. He is an administrator and by based on what his definition is, not by his title, but what his job duties are, he is exempt. And according to my interpretation of your employee handbook, which I've taken copies and highlighted all the pertinent actions you do address in here, we talk about exempt and non-exempt. Non-exempt meaning hourly, subject to the federal labor laws. And we go into here. The papers that were submitted with this excluded the section before here that starts with hourly employees. Pages from here forward that were went there don't use the word hourly. It's a continuation of this, so it was missing from there. So there was pertinent information that was missing with that claim. The problem I have is Mr. Arman has already been paid as he's allowed to. You're allowed to pay in advance certain claims, such as payroll. So he's already been paid this. Assuming that he is exempt, he's not entitled to the overtime or the compensatory hours that are there. And that does constitute an overpay to him. I've written all this down. I will go ahead and go over this with you. Based on his salary and they, if you look at this, it looks as though he works a seven-hour day. You can see some references to this. And his hourly rate ends up being $21.32 an hour based on his salary, on his regular rate. There's some other numbers in the column over here. There's a seven and another 14 that sits for two, two days or something. I don't know if that's a pull from something that's not identified. I did speak with Tammy Monroe who signed the voucher for this. She, that's not her handwriting. She didn't do any of that. The sheet that includes all the tables on there, she provided, but she didn't do the handwriting. And of course, the auditor didn't do that. All they did was certify the numbers. I'm having difficulties in saying that that is a proper itemized invoice. There's no documentation for the timetables or the time cards that fed his vacation time, too. And he's been here with the county for many, many years. And I didn't have access to the time cards. I've asked for that, but I have not been granted that access yet. So I'm asking that you table this right now so that we can look into the numbers that are feeding this and have the county attorney certify that. And actually, that's reporting to State Board of Accounts. And so I basically asked all of these here. And we're also addressing the other problems that we're having here as far as the numbers. There's no signature. We don't know who's done this. We don't know what they're based on. There's no validation for it. I'm not saying that Mr. Arman shouldn't be paid what he's owed. I'm just saying that we don't know what he's owed. And these are our taxpayer dollars. And we need to, we have, we should have a proper attorney before that. Health Department's unable to give those to me. I've spent and dedicated a lot of time under the Health Department. Those hours are supposed to be in personnel file instead of public records. I'm sure that Lo will give access to me to those, but I wasn't able to get it prior to today because he didn't, he was unable to return calls. So I'm asking that you guys go ahead and do some investigative work and try to substantiate these numbers before you go through that.
Let me help. Because we have the control of, I don't know how it works, pay or account that came out of it, because there's money that appropriated.
I do have a copy of the appropriations here. If you can read these. I was having difficulties because of handwriting of that till should be accounts. I also had a problem that, these are the pay stacks from Tammy and Ro for that pay area. Here it is. She's right here. And this is their salaries right here. They ended up procreating ours because Tammy took over the interim administrator position. So they ended up asking to pay her the administrator's salary, which I don't have a problem with. She's salaried, but they didn't comp on her as hourly. I don't know why. And right here, they're just, they're just going to go to there as his leave payout and that it was mandatory compensatory time. So I've had to work this backwards to try to figure out what these numbers mean over here.
Is there a cat cap on how many days you leave to that?
For compensatory time?
No, no. Well, when you say that, you mean vacation sick time?
Sick time. He's not allowed sick time. And when an employee leaves, that's right here in your manual here. The only thing he's allowed is his vacation time. He forfeits everything else. So if we get into here, and actually, that's a part of the claim. You don't have the original claim. Correct. Okay. They've written it off. Employees must exhaust all accretive compensatory time prior to utilizing vacation time. And so the problem if you look in here is a lot of these other, these are other employees in the Health Department, I'm assuming. Some of these show days and hours. Some of them show nothing. So we don't know if this 236 and a quarter OT, if that is hours or days. They converted it over here to days. I'm looking down here and there are different, there's different measures. Nothing compares. And I was told that Tammy says that they just use this for their own internal reference that they're supporting.
Right. Days are in hours.
Each department has their own.
Own way of tracking.
Right. That's just the.
But that back terrible sheets is what we have.
Not that.
Yeah.
Right.
That is hours.
No, not that. So one of the back.
Yes.
That is.
So then one, that I think I have to grant, until that part. But I learned today that that property is not supposed to be that. And I actually have, they were trying to make sure I got that back to my chair. Has to match those. I actually know what you're talking about.
We don't seem to manage.
It actually, right.
I'm assuming that all the department heads were notified or meeting on how to fill them out, but we just simply, Tammy was not in fire department.
Sure. I think all we can do for your day is say we'll look into this.
That's all I'm asking. Will you table this?
Follow up on it. If there's nothing to table, we don't have anything to add on.
We don't have anything to add.
You didn't have to sign off on it?
They've already requested to table the additional.
There's payroll that is already.
So where do we go from here as far as is what actions do you find out if we find out that he was actually overpaid? That he wasn't entitled to this? Do I have to be?
I don't know who has the governing power. Does the Health Board have the power over the employee?
By statute, the Health Board approves all appropriations for the Health Department.
When you fire somebody, you can, you can pay them all that or you don't have to pay them. And if your manual says you have to, then you have to. You know, I've let people go and I've paid them their sick time and stuff because I felt that was the right thing to do at the time, and I didn't.
If you look at the original claim I didn't do, these are all crossed off. He's not entitled to sick. Half days are personal. He forfeits those when he leaves. All employees do. They don't get to carry those over. And compensatory time is paid at time and a half for hourly employees. When they terminate, they're paid at their regular, their regular rate, not an hour and a half. And that's what they've tried to do. And it would be at his highest average over the last year and a half, or his most recent ever is the highest. And that's what they have compensated him, whoever, that the commissioners have already approved this, and this has already been pushed through as a payroll issue right here. So I just have concerns that he wasn't entitled to that. And there is no classifications. How do you guys classify yourself as exempt or non-exempt? How do I look in your books and know if someone is classified as either of those? Do you guys know when you're looking at your payroll or?
We know what is salary, what is hourly. When we look at budgets.
When you look at the budget, we're just looking at a salary, but you're not, you're not able to determine whether that individual is exempt or non-exempt, other than that they address it in our employee handbook here. And they also do it for the U.S. Labor. So I, given this gives you the criteria, what determines an administrator? It's not his title, but it's what his duties are. And I hate to tell you, but Mr. Arman fits this description here. I can't find how over.
Those are days.
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 Yeah. The hours are recalcitrations.
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying.
That's what he's saying.
236.
Now, it's funny, all kinds of the county discrepancies in the Health Department?
There were vouchers that were missing. There were vouchers that were paid off at estimates. There was, there was missing data. And I guess I am asking you guys to initiate some type of an audit so that we can determine exactly where we're sitting.
The State Board of Accounts audits. Do they not audit the Health Department as well?
They go through the employee service record cards that everyone has.
The state does.
And they do, as conducting the audit, whenever they pull the claims from me at random, they are part of the audit.
So this was done.
Yes. But that doesn't do individual transactions. It doesn't find the annual statement for the county in itself. Isn't that true? It's looking at the finances, make sure that the accounts are balanced. It's not looking to see if the claim.
No, he pulls individual, he gives me a list of probably 100 vouchers, check numbers. I pull the actual claim that was turned in to me and then he reviews that.
Okay. Well, I just spent the last two days doing the same thing, looking through the box. I myself, and I'm not an auditor, I found glaring discrepancies in 2011 and up in 2012.
You may have, Sherri, but what Heather is saying, they just take random numbers. We never know what they're going.
I'm letting you know you've got a problem. So what I'm saying is, is either we initiate this internally or the state will initiate it through another, through another body. I don't think that the county wants to put itself into that position where it's not being, it's not holding its fiduciary responsibility here. We've got, we've got glaring problems. If you have questions, do what I did. I'm not getting paid to do this. I've dedicated my time to go over here to try to verify these numbers. And I can find this here. You guys will find the same. I'm telling you, we've got a problem.
We'll take all your information and, or do say we'll follow up on that and see what's going on.
I appreciate it.
I'm of the mind that probably the Health Board is the overseeing body of that department. And they're the ones that add on that. Because they oversee a body that's who he reports to do that.
Well, I understand, but the commission, the commissioners appoint the Health Board. And I'm sorry, I've bounced around, so I've done bouncing. So Mr. Mark Cash, you've heard what's going on here. So we have remaining issues with Health Department that need to be addressed. The fact that Mr. Arman's gone hasn't removed the problems that are still existing. So I'm asking you to go ahead and bring this up at the commissioners' meeting. I don't want this to sit in limbo. It needs to go somewhere.
Wouldn't it seem prudent under the circumstance? My name is Larry Jones, by the way. I've had serious issues with Mr. Arman as well, which seems to be resolved itself. And real quickly here, I see the issues that are coming because I've looked at this as well. But wouldn't it not be prudent to be proactive, call the State Board of Accounts and say, hey, let's lock the doors, come in, take a look at all of the accounts so that win, lose, or draw, the man's either given a clean bill of health and everything's okay, protect yourselves.
Protect, protect our tax dollars. Make sure that we've got a clean slate, we've got a new health administrator coming in, and we can start right.
I tried to call them about a petition, but it was some center. And I was told by them after talking to half a dozen of them, really, when they come in, they do their thing. That's what they do. And it's a spot thing like this, it's up to you guys to sort that out.
Okay. So that tells you that we're back here again between one of our three bodies here as far as pointing fingers. So I realize it's going to be more to the commissioners here, but I need this to get some type of a resolution or whatever, to follow up on this and to not let this, this needs to be addressed. We've got at least $5,000 right here that's been overpaid that could go pay for your bicep tendon. Pay a portion of your bicep tendon.
If the board.
Our bicep tendon. Leverage.
If the board agrees, Sherri, but that's if the board agrees. I will be glad to contact the State Board of Accounts because I deal with them on time and see what they say about the situation and see if they're willing to come down and do an audit.
If they can at least.
If the board agrees.
If they could at least look at the payroll. The payroll issue is the one. And then I've seen other issues. Those are secondary to this here. So if they can substantiate these numbers and also give you some type of a ruling as to exempt or non-exempt as to whether or not our tax dollars were appropriated currently, that would be the one.
I don't have a problem to do that if that's what the board wants me to do.
This is the first time we've seen this. I mean, we've got kind of digested.
I've got a legal copy.
So when you approached them at the Health Department, they could answer any.
No, I can point it over here, over there, just like here. It's Health Department, not the commission. No, it's here. So that's the reason I'm here today. And I know that this was already prepaid. I understand your process and stuff, and I'm just questioning. And I'm not saying Mr. Arman isn't entitled to whatever he's entitled to. I'm saying that that hasn't been done.
I'll give my work on following. As chairman of this body of the auditor, let's see what we can. Just go forward and fair things out, see what's there.
So are you doing a resolution to initiate an audit for the payroll purposes at least?
I'm sure we can do that.
You just did a resolution to do that? Did I misunderstand?
No. I said, if the board wants me to, I will talk to the State Board of Accounts and see where we can go. Well, no, I need to talk to the state, the county, because the State Board of Accounts and see what authority they have to come down to audit the State Board of Health and the Health Department, not the State Board of Health, the Health Department. Because the actual auditors in the state of Indiana are the State Board of Accounts. So I'll be glad to talk to them and see.
That's an informal action. That's not a resolution.
No, I'm not making a resolution. I don't know what the board wants to do.
You'll have to find out how much it'll charge.
Exactly.
Absolutely.
And what protocol we have to go through to get something done. Because it's obvious we've never done that, so we don't know the exact protocol yet.
So can you make a resolution to address it at your next council meeting if you're, to give us an update?
We can table it and table it up at the next one.
Okay.
And I'll make a motion to table it until the next.
I'll second that.
I'll second the table investigation. Any questions on Sherri Chapman? For discussions that you. Get every thought.
Those are copies. I don't need those if you need the next steps.
With that, I have the motion that Laura does check with the State Board of Accounts and make motion that you will, that you do check with the State Board of Accounts and make that into, make that into getting it started.
I'll second that. Laura, go ahead. I think I'll take state board. All right.
Thank you, Laura.
There's an extra one in case you guys need some time to digest. I do have extra markers. If you have questions, please feel free to contact me and ask me to get this resolved as soon as we can. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Sherri. Orders 21204, establish Jefferson County Department of Redevelopment Commission. We'll take a pen, just majorize yourselves fast. It's an ordinance made in the county code to add a new chapter, establish the Jefferson County Department of Redevelopment and Jefferson County Commission. Software out of the board commissioner, Jefferson County, establish department redevelopment controlled by 45 members. Pursue public purposes of the act of board commissioner, and desire to establish Jefferson County Department of Redevelopment and Jefferson County Commission.
What is the main function that they're supposed to?
This is, this is for marble hill, 600 acres. Just come off that 600 acre.
What is the bill on?
This. This is for the tips.
For the tip.
The tips.
Make a count of it.
Yeah. This is probably just, come around. This is what that, this is formed by, it's made by people that.
And ultimately, appointed would necessarily be council members or commissioners, or the others.
It's spelled out in here. Section 3. It's appointed by.
Three commissioners, two from the county council.
Right. I'll make that motion. I think it's important. I think you have a very, very good question. If there's discussion, more favor?
Serve from January first. Which is on the new form. So she was sorry.
Yeah.
I thought the form was confusing.
Behind all of that, but the state requires her to have it that way. Our old form is behind. It's for unemployment and it's where the rate has increased. The state notified us in March that our unemployment rate increased effective January. And it nearly doubled from what, while I can get over. We went from 1.7 to 2 points, I'm not sure, something. And our new max is now 260 per employee. That makes over $95,000 instead of 70.
This is for.
For the WIC, the WIC fund needs an additional to finish.
$95. We've also got King Dale, Teetown Corporation for Low Repair, Security Glasswork.
Where are we getting?
He's got the detail.
Oh, he's got the detail.
And we got another King Cap jail. This is $134.50, aren't you a dozen of them?
So it's reimbursable expenses when they were doing the planning for the.
Another King Cap jail, $147 for Terry's E, driver.
So it totals to 2860, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay.
Are you going to prove you're funding the base later or you want to?
You want to just hold their own? Is there anything out of the general fund? Not under the.
No.
Okay. There are some transfers, but not.
Okay.
Right. That's probably a different.
That's just it. It's just like, yeah.
He is the individual.
The new one, yeah. She's put them all together rather than instead of each individual thing.
I'll make the motion, approve the motion. I'll say.
And then on the transfers. That is all to, that, there would be transfers that all go to part-time help in the Treasury Office.
In the Treasury Office.
These are all transfers.
These are all transfers.
And I think that's, she's, she's done actually what we've asked her to do because, you know, she was asking for part-time money. We asked her if that, if she can move it from any place else, and I think she says no.
Right. By staying with the same tax, the same people printing the tax bills, she saved money.
She saved some.
And.
I'll second that. Yeah, they got the change in the forms on it. Yes.
I know. I'll just go next.
The highway.
Yes, the highway. The highway and the animal shelter. Well, is the animal shelter, I guess, an additional appropriation?
No, it's moving money, it's moving money that's already there that's come in, in, without the words.
Yeah, she's actually appropriated.
It happened to be appropriated because she has to appropriate the money that she's received in, into her budget.
Is it done with expensive fees?
Yes. There are fees that are, that, I mean, what is coming in from the services and the benefits that she has.
No, that's the one that someone's supposed to be appointed to. The member.
That's a problem.
See, is this where you're supposed to put a member's name in? You're not going to put it in.
A point.
Okay. That's probably just a copy.
So that we don't have this one. We have the point. On that, I don't think you can sign that. That was a resolution, but this one I don't think I can sign.
It's a 40.
So we relook at it.
This is all that's in. Do we, do you guys, because there's another.
For the rest of them?
Right. For both ordinances that were discussed, the one for the headed, had you signed the anything for the, for two? And then of course, four would be the last.
Four is one, this is one.
Right.
Four is one. Four is one.
This is the one that says the point. Where we are. Do we go high in? We never put it.
So we might say to take that as well. Mark, there's, all three commissioners will be on the redevelopment ignition. Is that where I'll be? For your point three.
We're point three people.
Point three people and the county doesn't point two.
And you, you guys are point three people.
Okay. Three is, okay.
They're point three.
Okay. So I.
Do you have those signed?
We would need two of those.